Good evening. Can you hear me? Wow, that was real loud. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Oh, that's better, thank you. We're gonna call this meeting to order at 6:35 August 1st. We will please, if you can, rise with pledge allegiance. Cash, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
Yes, Mayor. Hands over your heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash.
Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call, Mr. Rossi.
Councilmember Law.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Pas- Pascha Faguita. I'm gonna get it right in the next two minutes, I promise.
Yes, sir, President, thank you.
Mayor Bochamp Crosby.
Here.
Mayor Heffer.
Here. Item number four, do we have any announcements or upcoming community events that we'd like to speak about before we start our meeting? Nothing on the agenda, just upcoming events? Wow. I've got a couple. National Night Out is tomorrow night. I don't know if you've seen it, but it starts at 4:30, 7:30 p.m. at Lost Flores Park. Police Department's gonna be out there with all their wares and fun stuff. I know they've been posting it on the website, all the police department has on Chief Flores. I think they have everything been posted. It's gonna be a fun night. They have a ton of police vehicles, music games, community vendors, free kids' face painting, and free kids' fingerprinting, so. And also, he brings some supplies to stuff a squad car with kit supplies for school, if you can bring that, and just come and have a great time. So that's 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Also, a big thing that happened, who was it, Mr. Crosby? Was it Friday, was it Friday or Saturday? Was it Saturday? The girls' Little League softball won Western Regionals and took it in a sweep. And they will be going to the Little League World Series, World Series in Greenville, North Carolina, so.
Good afternoon. My name is Albi Sanchez, I'm the director of Modestic Cycling. August 14th, we promote a bike race that we have here off of Pudding Stone. It's amateur-professional bike racing. We do have a free kids' bike race that starts at 1:20. So it'd be great to have the families come out, bring their kids, do a little free kids' bike race while they're out there racing pros, and so that's August 14th on Pudding Stone. We'll be out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Albi. So also, just to back up on that one, there is a GoFundMe page out. We'll be posting that, I know I put on my Facebook page, Instagram. The city's got some information out, I think, on the Little League softball, and...
Yeah, on social media, I don't know if we have a link to the fundraiser, but we will...
It's on the Little League page.
Yeah, on the Little League page. So, Danish, I think it was about $20,000 to get to Greenville, North Carolina. So, they've done so well, congratulations to the coaches, congratulations to the families, but congratulations to the girls, they have just kicked it and just rocked it out of the park, so. But it does take money to make these things happen, so if you can, $5, $10, it's worth every penny. I know that they raised their initial, I think $8,000, they got to that for their trip to San Bernardino, but it's a little more costly to get to Greenville, so. Any other announcements for anyone? There was a movie in the park last night. It was Raya and, what was it, Chief? I got it right here. You forgot, right? It was Raya and the Last Dragon, and I know that next weekend we'll have concerts in the park, the last one on August 7th. And then that following Sunday, we have Encanto, another movie night in the park. And they had pizza, they had candy, they had popcorn, they had all sorts of stuff. It's just beautiful weather that time of night, it really cools off nicely, and it's Heritage Park's got so many trees, it's a very nice place. But the Police Officers Association, thank you very much, also Community Services Department, the RSPD, had officers there and the families. It was really a lot of fun, I know Cash was there, Councilmember Cash was there, and it was a great night. It's just, that's what our community's about, it's just people having a great time and enjoying it, but it takes all of our associations and our city services to make these things happen, to make a nice place for residents to visit and the kids, so. Anyone else? Okay, we will go to consent calendar, Mr. Rossi. Do we have anything to pull from the consent calendar?
We do not.
Do you have any questions from council on the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second it.
Vote, please. Motion gets carries. Okay, we move to item number six, is that correct, Mr. Rossi?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Other matters, contract for car shows in Old Town Laverne, Mr. Rossi. Oh, Mr. Shear, Director Shear will be presenting this to us?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is a proposed new exclusive franchise agreement for the two car shows that are held annually in Old Town Laverne between the city and Flying Duses. The city had entered an agreement with Flying Duses for the last three years, or pre-doven, and then wrapped up with this last full proof in April, so that contract is now expired. So the contract agreement is mostly the same as the previous one, with some changes regarding compensation. I'm gonna go over that with you tonight. When the last agreement was originally written and entered, at that time and previous to that, the Police Department Reserve Officer Program traditionally provided the security for the event. And in exchange, the promoter would pay to that program $750 per event to pay for those costs. Those were not hard costs to the city of Laverne. However, unfortunately, the reserve program is not up to staff or not up to members to be able to support the appropriate staffing that's required by the Police Department for these events. That's not just the car shows, it's pretty much most events in the community. So those are costs that are now absorbed by the city's budget, the general fund budget, because as these are typically overtime hours for officers to be able to be there for these events. In addition to that change, the Fire Department now has, with the new Emergence Operator or AO program, the fire team has identified his desire to have AOs at all community events. And so, that is a benefit, because it doesn't have straight-on the Fire Department's operation during the events, especially if it's a simple medical call, but that's a new thing for all community events that's relatively new as well, under the new AO program. So that's a new charge. So on page two of the report, I've outlined basically the hard cost to the city for having, in this example, a car show. And this is per show, with overtime between the Public Works Department, which do a lot of work for these events. Street closures, but it's also prepping the days before during normal hours, but having crews out there that empty trashcans, help clean up. A lot of those operations are called the Public Works Department and have since the beginning. But it does require overtime pay for those staff as well. So with those changes and inspection by the Fire Marshal, we've identified that these costs, these events, cost roughly $8,500 to the city budget, which isn't specifically budgeted for in the current budget, but it is cost to the city. And typically, in past years, those costs have absorbed in each department, with their overtime costs, because there's other things that happened throughout the years that are not identified, but we wanted to make it a point to show to the council what the costs are for these events. Over the last three years or so of car shows, the Police Department costs have been absorbed by that department's budget, because again, the reserve officers just simply went there to provide the staffing. There are other soft costs, use of city equipment, like I mentioned, normal staff setup times on the Thursday before the events, that aren't necessarily overtime paid, but does take those employees away from other projects that could be working on the community. So those are just costs, they're not hard dollar costs to the city. In addition to that, the Police Department has identified a need for a traffic control plan to be submitted and approved by the traffic engineer. This is something that, you know, we are now requiring for all special events in the city, primarily for liability reasons. We had a traffic control plan that showed where the streets did get closed, and lanes get closed, and signs, et cetera, but it wasn't a formal traffic control plan submitted by an engineer. So that's been requested by our Police Department, and staff fully supports that, but that is a one-time cost of approximately $6,000. So at their July 11th big meeting, the Downtown Business Improvement District discussed these proposed changes to the agreement, which a minor increase in compensation directly from the association, or, I'm sorry, the district, the bid was previously paying $1750 to the promoter per event. That's now been agreed to go up to $2,000 per event for the next three years. But the traffic control plan and these hard costs for staffing are not, both the bid and the promoter have indicated they cannot absorb these costs. So in order for these two car shows to continue as they have been, with the staffing that's being required by the individual departments to put it on, it is an additional cost to the city that, not all of it's, again, new costs, a lot of it's happened over the last couple of events, but the new cost is, $8,500 per car show with an additional one-time $6,000 upfront to have the next car show in November. So, staff has made two recommendations to the council with the proposed agreement. The first is that the council could approve the appropriation for the November meeting, sorry, November event, which is $14,500, the staff costs, as well as that traffic control plan, and approve the draft agreement with them, so that the promoter can move forward with promoting the November event. If the council wishes to not contribute the amount of money or somehow make modifications otherwise, that would require for us to go back and negotiate with the promoter, which most likely would put the November event in jeopardy of occurring, just because of timing. The promoter is here today, he would have liked to already start promoting this event, the November event, and so as time gets closer, it becomes harder to accurately and efficiently promote that event, so. Staff's recommendation is to approve the agreement, recognizing the costs that are associated with it, slight increase with the AO program, some of the Fire Marshal inspections, and identifying and recognizing the overtime costs to both Public Works and Police, and approving the $6,000 for the traffic control plan. Like I said, the promoter's here, if you have any questions, but I'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Council, any questions for Director Shear?
I think I have a couple of questions, but after.
You wanna wait for public comment? Any, you wanna wait for public comment afterwards? Just a real quick one, Director Shear. Is that $8,500 a hard number? I mean, it looks like when these were left, a gap in here, is that something we got together with all the departments?
Yeah, these are the numbers that he gave to me, I asked these numbers from them. Obviously, these are rough numbers, so approximately that amount. Annually, that number probably will go up with raises in rates, increases on employees' salaries, but for now, this is, we believe, an accurate number for this coming fiscal year.
So basically, we're looking at $14,500, $12,500 if you take the $2,000 off from the dividend.
The dividend amount is not included in these numbers, so that pays separately due to their own budget.
Okay.
So that's not, those aren't city dollars, and they have agreed to compensate the promoter for that.
So $14,500 is really our number, it's the $6,000 for the traffic control plan, which you feel is necessary, which I would agree to, and then the $8,500 for the hard costs this year for that, with all the services rendered.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But also, this does bring a lot of people into our city, notoriety of Laverne, and to the business, especially in the downtown business area, where it brings a lot of money that day, that if it did not happen, would not be there too.
Right, yeah, so the district obviously pays $2,000, they're funds from other events, because this isn't a ticket event, there's no direct revenue to the district. Some of the businesses obviously do better that day with more people in downtown, but it's not like a ticket event like the beer walk was.
It's definitely a plus for our community anytime we have an event, especially this one. I know that the K-9 benefits tremendously from this, I know that they're very well-represented, I know that he gives them the booths and the area for them to advertise, very good about advertising as far as our community. It's just, again, it's a budget item, and we need to discuss it because of the fact that it's something that's not in the budget, and it's a hardcore expense, so. But it is definitely a wonderful thing for our community. Thank you. We'll probably be having to back up here, Director Shear. With that, I want to open up public comment. Any wish to speak on this item? If you do, just please, your name and your address and...
I suggest...
Oh, you know what, let's do the, if you don't mind, Ms. Bochamp, when we have the promoter come up first, and...
Okay.
If you could just please kind of pull the mic and speak closely to it, as others told by council member, don't eat it, but talk.
Talk to it into it. Anyhow, I've been doing the event for three years, and every group I work through with, your group, Public Works, the Police Department, you know, everybody, it's just a great, great relationship. I mean, when we have our pre-production meetings, they're kind of useless, because everybody's been doing it for almost 30 years, you know, and Public Works, we go over where the signs are supposed to go, or whatever, and they go, "Been doing it for 30 years, we know where they all go." And the Police Department brought it up at the last meeting, that we've been using, what was supplied to me, drawings that were submitted, you know, when it first started. Well, in 30 years, that drawing has been copied, it's a copy of a copy of a copy, and they said, "If we ever had to go to court, we can't even read what's on the drawing." We see the drawing, but to explain it to a court, we couldn't do it, you know, so I understood, you know, that was a good request by the Police Department. But we support the city in every way we can. I take out a digital billboard off the 60 freeway that promotes the event every year, and there are friends of mine that own billboard companies, so they do give me a deal, but everything's going up, you know, on my standpoint. But as long as it benefits a charity, they'll cut me some slack on advertising the Laverne car shows and whatever. And we've been real blessed to promote and benefit the Laverne K-9 Police Foundation in buying and training dogs and whatever. And when Bill Engel came to me, at first, he just wanted a booth, and I said, "I'll be real honest with you," I said, "You might make $150, $200," and I said, "Why don't you take over the raffle table, and I'll have Denise talk about what, you know, what the table has done over the years and whatever." So, you know, everybody loves raffles, the guys that come to the show, they all like what the girls put together, great prizes and things like that, so. They've benefited tremendously from it, over just having a booth in the show. But everybody, you know, we honor the neighbors around, we, you know, and all our printed material, don't race, don't rev your motors, there's people sleeping at 6 o'clock in the morning on the street you're coming down, and they're all respectful. I mean, we've not had a problem in three years, so I'd like to continue the shows and, you know, increase them and get them better, so. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Bochamp.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My question about this item is that if we knew the contract had expired, why wasn't this line item on the budget that was presented just a few meetings ago and was adopted by the city? Because that is a fairly large number, and I think it also shows that, you know, it's deceptive when you look at the agenda, and the description that's in the agenda says $14,500, but yet Director Shear just pointed out an additional $8,500, and then whatever that additional amount was. So, there's definitely some discrepancies in the numbers that are being presented to the public, so I think that needs to, going forward, I think that's something that needs to be clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bochamp. Anyone else like to speak on this? Come on in. Ms. Fisher.
Hi, everyone, I'm Denise Fisher, and I'm part of the K-9 and Police Foundation, and we have been blessed to be able to be the raffle and 50/50 sponsor for this, and for the last two car shows, we have made a little over $11,000 for our foundation. And one year of training for our K-9 Dino is $12,000, so just in what we made, that is almost one year's worth of training for Dino. And we are working on getting money for our second K-9, as well as a therapy dog, so it's been, for us, a huge money maker, and plus it gets people more aware of our foundation and what we are, and people in the car shows, they always seem to be very supportive of police and city functions and things like that, so I for one am hoping that you guys do approve this and keep it going in Laverne. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you be at National Night Out tomorrow?
Yes.
Of course you will, wonderful. Anyone else like to speak on this? Go ahead, close public comment, bring it back up to the council.
I'd like to answer a couple of questions, and I'm sure Eric will correct me if I get these wrong. As far as why it wasn't in the budget, at that time, we didn't know what the terms of the extension were going to include, that just came about in the last month or so, so that's why we're bringing it before you. And as far as the number, I think the $14,500 is inclusive of the $8,500 and the $6,000, so I think it accurately reflects what it is we are asking for an appropriation from council, should they wish to consider moving forward.
I think that with Ms. Bochamp was the fact that when I looked at this too, the actual hard numbers weren't in there. The $8,500 wasn't there, the $6,000 was, but it was just a guesstimate, and then until he told us what it was, I think that was what, is it in there? Is the $8,500 in there?
Yep.
Oh, it's in the memo portion?
So it's like around the $6,000?
Okay, it's in there, okay. I stand corrected.
Is that on your staff report? Because it's not on this agenda right here.
Is it the full posted agenda?
It's on the full agenda.
Full posted agenda.
Oh, in the packet, in the packet.
It is right there, yeah. Anyway, okay. Council, comments, suggestions?
I know the $14,000 is quite a large sum for this. I do believe it gives great benefits to our downtown business and to Laverne. I do appreciate the police and the fire and the Public Works really spelling this out as well, because in the years past, it just wasn't, and so this is bringing transparency of how much that the city's putting in this to bring businesses down and people to Laverne. This does attract many people from outside of Laverne to Laverne to see what our wonderful city provides, and it's great entertainment for free for all of our residents as well. So, really do appreciate it and appreciate the costs that are spelled out. I think that's what our department heads have been doing in the last two years, specifically is really pointing out all the costs and making sure that it's not just umbrellaized that the police are being involved, or the Fire Marshal is doing it, but what is the cost of those things? So, appreciate bringing those transparency up.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. Councilmember Law.
I just have a clarifying point, I want to make sure I understood this correctly, Mr. Shear. For, it's for the first event is the $14,500, because the $6,000 traffic plan, we anticipate will be able to be duplicated without having to reoccur that $6,000 cost, is that correct?
That is correct.
So then, for every event, for under the three-year period going forward, it'd be a roughly $8,500 expense, so $14,500 for the first event, which is the Thanksgiving car show, and then approximately $8,500 for the following events.
Correct.
Thank you.
And while I'm up here, just to further, to Captain Crosby's point, staff does have an intention of coming back to the council, probably along with the mid-year budget adjustments, to further outline the cost of other city events, recognizing that this is something that the different departments have been absorbing for years, and hasn't been a separate line item specifically to identify what does it cost the city to put on the porch to jog. We know there's friends of the porch that pay for a lot of it, but there still are these other kind of hidden costs, if you will, of people doing work and getting paid under their department, under overtime costs a lot of times, that just get absorbed in the department's overall annual budget. So, we want to try to break those out for you, we had been under discussion about this prior to this agreement, to trying to start getting our head around what these events cost, all the different operations of departments, to then present that to you in a future, maybe along with mid-year, just with transitions of different people, that might be tough, but it is a goal that staff has of bringing back to you for all other city events.
Then with those costs pulled out, that it does come away from the overtime cost too.
Right.
So it's not adding to the budget, it's really just pulling out and really speaking clearly.
It creates a line item where it's very transparent, to your point of what it costs to put on community events, because there is a cost, right? The people love them, but there are general fund dollars that have to pay to put all these events.
Thank you, Director Shear. Councilmember Johnson.
I appreciate being able to see the actual numbers, I think that's important, I think it's important for the community to see what those numbers are as well, so I do appreciate that.
Councilmember Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a cost at everything that we do, but, you know, you don't put a cost on memories that we built here as a young kid growing up. I really enjoy coming to the city, and a lot of the community members did too, so when we don't have them, people really get upset, so I like to see them continue to have them, and I like to see our law enforcement officers continue to be there and support and make sure that our citizens that live here, and those that come visit here, and spend their money, and build those memories are safe. That's all I would ask for, and I'm gonna continue to do that, and I would always support anything this community believes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Councilmember Law.
I just have a quick question, and if you don't have an answer to this right now, that's okay, but if you can think about it. I liked what Denise was saying about how much the K-9 Foundation was able to raise, because I think that's a good story or a good anecdote that the public may not be aware of, and so, you know, aside from just being a fun event, which is awesome for our community, but if we can, in a way, you know, measure, you know, how much more business are our businesses in that area doing, what do the returns look like? Because I think that is a good thing for us to be aware of, you know, what is the return on these events? And some of them are going to be memories and things that you can't quantify, but I think there are things that we can quantify that we'd be good to know.
I agree. One of the problems is, you know, we get sales tax dollars in quarterly statements, and so try to pinpoint an actual day and what that impact is, especially if these events have been occurring for many years, right? It was a new event, I would agree, then we could probably look at past history, but it might be tough to see like what the sales tax generations are, but if you're in Old Town during these events, you know that the restaurants are packed primarily, so we know that they did good business, but I don't know unless Bob has an idea about how we can modify and build financial advice to the city, it would be pretty tough.
Thank you, Director Shear. I agree with all my council members have said, but I'm a fee-based guy, I run a business, so it's very important to know what we're spending, and it's very important to know where our fee structures are. The Fire Department, last month, did an extensive, and it's still not done, there's a few items that have to be changed, an extensive fee structure alignment, which is very important to make sure that we know what we're spending and how we're spending it. We have a lot of the people that come into our community and have these events, and they're wonderful events, because we've got a great community. We're kind of a magnet here. We've got a great Police Department, got great Public Works, we've got Community Services, we've got all city staff that are really into this, and a lot of the city staff lives here, but I think it's important that we need to know what our fee structure is in order of what we're actually spending, because we do have a budget, every department has a budget. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I'm just concerned about the finances. Yes, it's overtime, and we know that every year the costs are going to be going up, so it's very important that we catch those costs and understand what we're doing here. And I do like that idea, it'll be a midterm, but, I mean, this is a three-year contract, we lock it up, it's three years, and I think it's wonderful, I will say, it is wonderful. Most of the events, almost every one of the events we have in our community is wonderful, it does build memories. It is great, it's great for the community, it's great for the businesses, but as a business, as a city, we need to know what we're spending. We have booths on the ground, no longer RSPDs, which could buffer the effect of a cost of a police officer, and our Public Works Department, and our Community Services Department. You guys don't notice, they're out there in force, whether it be the wine walk, whether it be the beer walk, whether it be the car shows, whether it be even movie nights in the park, concerts in the park, the Fourth of July. I think as a city, we need to get a handle on this, to know what we're spending. We can be generous, but at the same point, we want to make sure that the contracts that we have as we move forward... we have as we move forward, we know what the costs are to the residents, say this is what we're spending, and this is something we want to do and have an open discussion about it. So my feeling to throw it out there is to do, let this go. We need to have this happen because we don't want this car show not to happen. I think it's been a wonderful event. But possibly maybe an RFP after the November, do it for the year and then open it up after that, or an RFP for...
So just for clarification, this is a three-year agreement that is being proposed. So we did, the dividend, because the dividend technically derives this agreement. They're the ones that kind of have outlined it. We did go to an RFP previously and after many efforts of trying to get people to submit, there was only one submitted. But this promoter has proven to be a good partner in these events. And I just did want to clarify too, that you know, this $8,500 is not a brand-new cost to the city that hasn't been there. Most of it's been paid in the past years in different operational. So it is an increase of about $650, but recognizing the overtime police department cost, that's kind of the important part. Because under the agreement, basically, the city is responsible for providing security. That's what the agreement says. So that's why we're letting the council know what those costs have been for the last four or so events. And we expect to continue unless for some reason the reserve program became populated again where they can take over those efforts, then that could be relied upon. So the agreement though is before you tonight for the three years. So if you wish to get to an RFP after this one event, I would suggest not approving the contract. But these costs are not, I don't know that there's a promoter that's going to pick up the $8,500 cost and still put on the event, the quality event that we were used to. So we just wanted to bring it to the council's attention what the costs are, but the promoter basically, it's separate from the promoter's agreement, it's basically saying we're responsible for these costs. So I don't know that RFP is going to get you away from spending the overtime costs with our officers. We technically have the police department to make sure that private security could be brought in instead. And the police chief has indicated that that would not be an option, that they would still require their four officers during the day. And then if there were problems, they, private security could supplement that like they do for the Fourth of July, but not any shakeup. So the four officers is, and it's a long day, right? So as the promoter mentioned, cars are coming in 5:00, 6:00 AM. And then they can start with five, so the full 12-hour day for the officers as well.
I think that's half the charm, the police officers. I mean, that's really it. My concern is just the fee structure. I think they're a great promoter, they do a great job, we have a great time. It's just that we need to nail these costs down and make sure that if that is, we need to negotiate with the promoter to say, hey, we need to get in a little more because it's costing us the same amount. Granted that we have quite a few functions during the year that are very successful, but at the end of the day, we need to know we're paying folks. So I mean, really, it's either approve the contract or we don't approve the contract. Let them continue this November and then we would go, I mean... Suggestions, counsel? I mean, it's been very successful. I think it's great. I just am a little concerned about costs. That's all. That's my own personal thing. We got four people on the desk here, but, you know.
No, I understand and agree with you too, when we actually have other events and other promoters sitting right here, that the cost is part of their group. You know, we have the Laverne Grand Prix, that it's part of their contract paying for that. And we've approved that tonight already as well. But the issue that's put in front of us, that it's happening in the member, if we don't approve it, then it's not happening.
I apologize. I would have to go back and discuss that with the promoter, right? I can't say for certain that it wouldn't happen tonight, but not approving that agreement tonight would definitely make it more difficult for the Laverne event to occur.
But we can revisit the agreement again. Is that correct?
Is the agreement a three-year?
I understand that.
After two years.
Is two. So it's a two-year reset?
So in two years, on the last year, when either party could basically terminate the agreement, that would be the option. So four events of the six.
Well, you're going to come back to us and tell us all the costs, you're going to tell us what's going on with most of the events we have in the near future, mid-quarter review, correct?
There's, it's a goal, but obviously we're awaiting the city manager and fire director. So there are other priorities, but it is on our list of things to bring back to the council.
I don't want to stop progress. I just want to make sure that we're cost effective, that's all. And just, Mr. Rossi, yes? Counsel?
Suggestions? And I don't want to add anything to anybody's plate, to more work as far as promoting it. But can we pay the overtime for some of our amazing staff that are very social media savvy and maybe send out some flyers and mailers to the community and use some of that money instead of spending all of it to task and for folks in our community to advertise this? Just suggestions?
The vice is not going...
My, he's working.
The vice, no, the vice, the vice is not going towards promoting it. It's towards our staff when the day runs.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying as far as, the conversation right now is talking about like the actual promotion of it makes me feel like there's costs for just the promotions. So just so I'm going to be clear.
No, my understanding, and Director Shear correct me if I'm wrong, if we were not to approve this contract right now, right, then we'd be revisiting negotiations. So no activity would occur because there would be no, there would be no agreed-upon terms on which we can move forward. So that's what would cause the delay. Not that there wouldn't be money to pay promotion costs or anything like that, but if we are not adopting this particular agreement, there are no terms.
Thank you.
Well, I personally don't want to stop this because I think it's wonderful and we benefit from it. Again, we'll come back to the fee structure. We do through a three-year agreement, we can come back in two years to revisit if we choose to. In the meantime, we all know what it's going to cost us, which, and we're going to revisit all the other ones also. So, being that said...
I wouldn't say we're going to revisit the other events.
No, no, we're going to know, we're going to try to figure out what the costs are. Not revisit them, just the cost, what we're actually paying to the citizens, no, we're paying for these events. No, no, no. No, no, no. No, no, no. Okay. And I think we need motion.
I move that we approve, I don't have the, it's 6A, right here.
6A contract.
Contract for the car shows in Old Town, Laverne.
Second.
I'll second.
All those favored? I mean, just both. There you go. A lot of discussion for five yeses. Okay.
That's the little discussion.
Discussion's important. Anyway, good motion passes. You've got your three years. And then if anyone else wants to donate to it, please help us out. Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll move on to item B, homeless outreach proposal. Mr. Rossi.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This will be a little bit of a tag team effort. In a minute, Chief Flores will be giving you the initial overview and then Sergeant Alvarado will be taking it from there. But just to intro the item a little bit, as counsel will recall, or to inform the two newest counsel, that when we were outlining the preliminary use of the ARPA funds, the city was the recipient of about $7.8 million, $7.6 million. And we designed how we wanted to put that money to use to council. One of the selected was to identify roughly $300,000 to be used to support homeless engagement efforts. So I tasked Chief Flores and her team with how they would put this money to the most effective use, recognizing that it was limited and only be for a temporary period of time. And they are bringing forward a program now that they would propose that would help to guide what would be future efforts in dealing with our homeless community. And what I was pleased about this report, we don't care about it, it doesn't just touch on how they will make use of the dollars, but what are some suggested changes to some of our ordinances that can help facilitate some of the enforcement efforts to improve their abilities. So with that, Chief.
Good evening, Chief Flores.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor of San Francisco. Counsel.
A little closer to the mic. Just don't eat them. Just don't eat the mic.
The best tip of the day. Good evening. I do want to thank you, City Manager Rossi, for giving us the time to put together a proper plan. We were given this project and happy to accept it earlier this year, but with the change of affair moving forward, and we stopped that event every single day that that was open, and Fourth of July is quite an overtaking for us. I don't have the additional personnel to put this into forefront, so thank you. You gave us the proper amount of time and I think you'll be pleased with the presentation Sergeant J. Alvarado is going to be giving you. I'm just laying a brief foundation for you. A few years ago, when I came to Laverne, realizing what's going on in the San Gabriel Valley with the Gold Line, LA County does have the highest amount of homeless population in the nation. We're getting close to 80,000. It's an issue that can't be ignored and we're learning and adapting as we go. We've learned many years ago that we're past the days of the police department just moving someone along that takes us in trouble and keeps the liability of our city at the forefront. So as we move forward, I just want to present a couple of little stats for you so you have a clearer picture about the background of what we do like every day. And then you'll see the presentation, which is a very flexible strategic plan we think for our city. So about four and a half years ago, we really changed the way we were collecting data on homeless. We didn't have a good mechanism in place. So what would happen is we'd get a call for service, maybe that somebody stole something from 7-Eleven, we'd go contact that person, it would be a misdemeanor given ticket. We didn't get a stat for that as far as contacting a homeless person because it would come out as a theft call. So we had to completely change the culture of our whole department, that every time they cleared, call for service. If they had a contact with a homeless person, they had to give a specific code so we could properly run the stats. So with that, over the last four and a half years, our actual data and calls for service have tripled. And we average about 130 calls a month for homeless call for service. So that's about four times a day. Some are quick and some are a lot longer, some take two officers, some take more, depending on the type of call that we're handling. But please know that we take this very seriously. Measure H came out several years ago and helped us build a team on a temporary basis. And we worked with all agencies in the San Gabriel Valley and we took turns going to different cities on an overtime basis. And we built our first, what we call host team, our homeless engagement team. They're an outreach team. We learned very quickly, we needed to get out of our uniforms and get a softer outfit to make us more trustworthy, to gain their confidence in us that we're there to help them, not just arrest them. Because as you know, arresting them just doesn't solve the problem. So as we move forward with that, if you look through the San Gabriel Valley of the cities that have opened their Gold Line stations, they have had increased calls for service and you know. So we've pulled just a couple of stats of the two biggest cities in the San Gabriel Valley that had remained stops. The first one, their current average calls for service is 400 a month. Cities are a tiny bit bigger than ours. And they started with what we have, about 30 calls a month, and now they're at 400. The other city along the foothills, their calls for service unfortunately have also tripled, but their homeless population has gone over a thousand percent increase. And you know, this is why we can't ignore this. This is why the strategic plan is so important. And again, we put a lot of time and effort into it to make it what's best for our city. So with this increased trend in our homeless population, this is a part-time program for us with the ARPA money. This is not a full-time detail. So as we also staff, I have no extra officers, we staff patrol, investigations, and all the special assignments that our beautiful city loves. And now we're going to, on an overtime basis, try and staff a part-time team. And we have a lot of volunteers that are willing to make this team happen and I'm really excited about it. They did great with the Measure H funds and I think they're going to take it even further for us. So with that, in moving forward, please know that this is not set in stone. We're presenting you something tonight that we think is best for us to manage, best for our city, best for our community, our businesses, but it could change. You could bring something to me and we want to switch gears, we can switch gears. We can adapt to all the needs that come our way. We don't know what's going to happen in the next three years, but ultimately, our preparation is getting our city prepared for the Gold Line. Our demographics are going to change and our police department is going to do the best we can to adapt. So we are here for questions after, but I'm excited to introduce Sergeant J. Alvarado, who's going to give you the formal presentation. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Sergeant Alvarado.
Good evening, Mayor. Secretary of Defense, counsel, and Senator. My name's J. Alvarado. I'm currently the sergeant who oversees the homeless outreach team. I started on the homeless team at the onset, so I've had a passion for it, been on the team for about five years. With that, I've been able to deal a lot with it and go to other cities and kind of see how they operate. So I have a pretty significant background in this. Like the chief had mentioned, currently we have about approximately 100 calls related to homelessness per month. This is about 10% of our calls per day. We are a city broken up into, it's broken up into three regions. So each region of our community is assigned one officer. These calls typically have a need for at least two officers. So you can see right away that they can be very taxing, like the chief alluded to, very frequently the time consumed because you have to spend time with them, you have to, you have to work with them, you have to build a relationship with them, you have to be able to build some trust and afford with some type of solution. Sometimes it's, you know, finding outreach forums, sometimes it's potentially an arrest, it's just all depends, situational based. Now, it's such a department's constructed three-year plan to address homelessness, including wraparound services. What this means, it's basically a collaborative approach, it's team-based, the service and support and planning for people experiencing homelessness. The foundational philosophy is basically to work with them and it's concept of diversion. So we're trying to get away from just necessarily like the chief alluded to, what we do in the vast is kind of push them along or, you know, we make arrests. We're trying to find alternative ways to find some long-term solutions. That may include housing, mental health assistance, substance abuse assistance, sometimes family reunification, leave home with relatives locally or if you got a state, or something simple with access to bills. The goal is to improve the quality of life through consistent engagement, outreach and enforcement. Our strategic plan could be looked at as three-pronged. The first prong could be focused on the team concept approach. And this, what our goal is to, like I alluded to earlier, that most of the calls, you need two officers to manage the call. Our team will be comprised of two officers and there will also be a mental health clinician, and that could be from an entity like Tri-City, Department of Mental Health, or some other experts or stakeholders in this room. Like I alluded to earlier, it's important to build the trust when dealing with a homeless individual. Sometimes our, you know, being an officer and wearing a uniform could deter them from wanting to accept resources. Having a partner who is trained in other mental health aspects and can offer other options for them moving forward allows us our greatest opportunity to stress or look into individuals. The second prong will be creating boundaries for enforcement. The department review the city ordinances relating to homeless, the homeless population and compare them to the surrounding cities. The department seeks to modify existing ordinances related to homeless inhabitants and other related issues to enforcement. We've learned through going to other departments and our own experiences that we've drawn out here, that we need to modify some of our ordinances. This is something that's going to be evolving. We might have to look at this year to year to kind of see what modifications or additions we need to accommodate our community. Some of the ones that I looked at, our department looked at that are significant are the public nuisance order, another one would be obstructing the public way or place. And then the third one would be a modification to curfew and locations where you're not where you're not able to wear. So we've seen these needs in our community grow and we've tried to alter and find new ways to be creative with our enforcement opportunities. Prong three relates to our operations. Currently, as the chief discussed, our personnel, our team members come from patrol, they come from investigations. They already have a full-time assignment. So we're pulling them from their, their overtime.
Sergeant, if we could just talk a little closer. They're having a trouble hearing you. Sorry about that.
Sorry, no problem. So like I was saying, our members on our host team, they come from patrol, they come from Detective Bureau, they come from different places. So they, in order to fulfill like our need for our team, they're gonna have to work on an overtime basis. So what that means is we're gonna have to be really flexible with our hours. We have identified certain times of the day, there are peak hours where we're receiving calls related to homeless. And we initially staffed or have a plan in place to staff those hours with the team. However, our proposal allows us for flexibility to adjust as needed. So there might be a situation at the evening where we need to come in and address the matter or work with somebody. Or it could be, you know, whatever we need to do just to be flexible and to be successful with, with that individual. We do have the agenda. It's in the packet. So basically it explains the schedule. So we're looking at, currently we have, we don't have any, any host team members working in our community right now. We have a regional team where we're, has allotted for funds for the, the original host team to come to our community. But we don't have technically any hours where we're able to do host enforcement or host outreach and engagement in our community. What this will do, this will offer approximately six to 10 days where the host team will be functioning in the community. And again, this flexibility allows for a lot. This, this could, this could be, you know, 12 days if we stretch out, stretch it out appropriately or if we have a need, it could be four days, six days. It just depends. But the great part about our schedule and this plan is that it allows us flexibility to accommodate those needs because different situations may arise, especially with the COVID coming. What this looks like is 72 hours of overtime would be allowed per, per month. Annually, this would look at, look something like 864 hours and approximately $89,000. We've also identified some one-time purchases we need to look into and this would be a large Conex box that is a storage of the arts, temporarily store property. Again, we've identified that this need, or we have identified this need based on our previous experiences and going to other cities such as Pomona where they found it's a situation where they didn't have the proper, proper storage facilities in place. So we're learning from what other cities have done and happened. We also have found a need for temporary emergency vouchers. So what these are is basically if we have a situation where it's urgent that someone needs shelter for the evening, we have money in place set aside to get them vouchers and keep them safe for More recently, we brought it to a situation with some biohazard property and we found that we definitely have a need to contract with the company for biohazard pickup. So we've allotted for in our proposal for $10,000 annually to accommodate that need. That could be, it's kind of a case-by-case basis. If we need like emergency fund, if we need emergency cleanup, or it might be something where we, we have this weekend where we need to get all this cleanup done and they come out and facilitate that. But we've looked at several different companies and got several of them bid. So we're looking at approximately In closing, the department's three-year plan will create a foundation moving forward to meet the needs of our homeless population, our community. Staff recommends that council consider a more permanent solution that will require expansion of department staffing levels in the future. Additional personnel will afford for the creation of a permanent, as opposed to obviously a temporary or team that's based on overtime. Council members will also, should also consider the use of our private firms such as CityNet. CityNet is a company which focuses on similar outreach programs and provides similar services as indicated above. There are other cities in Allen County that use this service. It was definitely something we can consider moving forward in the future. But again, you have to take into consideration the fact that, that it's a private entity. You don't have law enforcement that couples with them, which brings in a whole other realm of concerns. In closing, staff recommends the city council approve the appropriations of the American Rescue Plan Act of $300,000 and proceed with the plan. Detail with the staff report and direct staff proceed with the amended and mentioned ordinances to be brought back to council at later date.
Thank you Sergeant Alvarado. Do you have any questions for Mr. Alvarado? Good report.
Sorry, it was a lot.
No, very good. Thank you.
I would.
Public comment? Thank you. We might need to call you back up once we go to your public comment. Thank you very much. That was very good information. Have I opened up a public comment? I am in a wish to speak on this item? The need of Volchamp.
I have to say that it's extremely disappointing that this council approved that the city have a station for the goldmine, knowing that these numbers, 130 calls a day to now 400 and a thousand percent increase in homeless population. That, that, those two numbers alone should have been enough for you to say no to that. But we all know that it's too late now. So with those numbers being stated, how is it that, I know Sergeant Alvarado just explained the schedule's gonna have to be a lot more flexible, but if calls are much more time-consuming, you're gonna have officers facilitating homeless people yet, and they're on overtime now, they might have to leave to go to briefing before they start their regular shift. How is that gonna be handled? Because briefing is utmost important. Also, what and how will these homeless people be relocated to the shelters or to the mental health resource centers? You know, for lack of a better term, back in the days, there was a paddy wagon. You would put them in and transport them. I mean, do we have, are we gonna just use regular police cars for that? Or is there some other means that, you know, we can maybe collect more than one person at a time if there's several calls going on with that exponential increase in calls per day? And this is definitely not a problem that we need to look at temporarily. Unfortunately, that ARBA money is only temporary. So somewhere, and going back to what you said in the last item, we need to look at each line item very closely because we're, we're talking about something as important as homeless and the public safety. I guarantee you, people are gonna want that over an event in the city because they know they're gonna have to pay more taxes to facilitate more police in our city to be able to handle this increase in the homeless. So that's something else that needs to be addressed if this mid-year budget is, what is it gonna cost if we have a full-time staff that's handling just homeless population in this host program and maybe equipment that goes along with it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volchamp. Any else like to speak on this issue? Come on in, Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Richard Bowen. Quick observation and a couple of questions. I had the pleasure of doing a ride-along with, I think, Officer Alvarado at that time, maybe three, four years ago. It was cold. Last call of the night was a reported burglary down at the airport. And a bunch of cars rolled up. Guy came out. He was mad. And it looked kind of like it could be, end up being pretty bad. Jay got out of the car, walked over to this guy. Within two minutes, I never saw a bigger smile on a guy's face than I saw that night. And I was amazed. And he's got four or five police surrounding him. And Jay just, it was a miracle as far as I was concerned. So I just wanted to acknowledge that he did unbelievable work. I liked that to, to be leading this up. Question I have of this, it says here that the ordinances are to be amended. Public nuisance, and I won't go into it. Persons obstructing public place or walkway. And then lastly, the park location, curfew. What exactly, it doesn't really say here what that means. It says to deter public nuisance, to deter unauthorized use, accumulation, storage of abandoned shopping carts and laundry carts, any parcel land behind the, in the city. What does that look like? I mean, you roll up on somebody, and maybe Jay can explain it. You roll up on somebody who's got a cart, you take away from them, you transport it somewhere. I mean, I don't know what the ordinance would look like. Also, the same thing with the persons obstructing a public way or place. And then lastly, the park location curfew. We have one now, don't we? And this appears that it amends it. But if we have one now, what happens now? I mean, I see things on, on Nextdoor all the time where people are sleeping in the park. But if there is a, an ordinance now and it happens, how does this change that? And what's the repercussions? Because it says here it would be guilty of a misdemeanor. Well, I think we all hear the stories of what, what misdemeanors are anymore. You get a ticket and you go back to doing exactly what you did five minutes ago. So does a misdemeanor in this case mean they take this person off-site? Or do they issue a misdemeanor ticket and they can stay there all night as long as they want? So I would love to hear about a clarification of what these ordinances might be. And lastly, you know, if you live in the city long enough, I've lived here 30, almost 39 years, I see pretty much homeless encampments. And they're there, I think everybody sees them. I mean, you look behind the waffles, you look over by the 99 cent store. There's two guys that have been living there for a long time. And I assume I'm not the only person that's seen it. I've called it in a couple of times. But it's the same two guys. And yesterday on the news, we talked about vouchers and things. I don't know if anybody heard this, but downtown LA, they've been handing out vouchers and giving people hotel rooms, taking them off the street. Naked guy who's in one of their hotels walks into Trader Joe's naked. So, you know, this has gotta be something. I mean, obviously it's a mental health issue. And, but it's also gotta have some teeth to it. So from, so a clarity issue. And I think we all want this city to stay the great city that we all live here for. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Anyone else? Mr. Allison.
Good afternoon, evening now, Mayor and City Council. You know, if the police were to do something wrong, I'd be the first one to stand up and say it and beat my chest and do all that stuff, make a lot of noise. But I'm gonna stand up and beat my chest and say that I think the police has this right. And it's really good, it feels really good to have this type of leadership coming from our police department. I served on the homeless committee, I mean, years ago, and we were lost on what we were gonna do with the homeless situation. And then when the goldmine comes in, I think we're even more lost, right? And so the leadership that I think we're seeing exercised here through this plan needs to be noted. And not only does it need to be noted, I think it needs to be celebrated. So I, I do wanna commend Chief Flores and Sergeant Alvarado for a phenomenal presentation and what I think is a plan that, that is consistent with a lot of the plans of the cities that I've consulted and some of the other high-level police individuals that I've discussed dealing with quality of life issues. The one thing I do wanna, I guess, posit and make sure it's on the hearts and minds of folks is, you know, this homeless issue isn't gonna go away. And Sergeant Alvarado talked about this being a temporary thing to lead to permanent solutions, right? And I know that there are, at, at least I am personally aware of several Laverne residents who are in precarious economic positions. And when I was on that homeless committee years ago, we didn't think of this issue in the context of Laverne residents, right? And what happens if a Laverne resident were to become homeless? And what avenues to resources would they have available? And I live in the first district, Mr. Johnson, this is your district. Low-income people live there relatively speaking, and I know several of them to be not too far from needing homeless resources. So in addition to what has been positive, I really want to lift up the proposition that Sergeant Alvarado talked about with the long-term plan for dealing with homelessness and what this city can do not only to make sure that the undesirables stay away, but also to make sure that there's a safety net that exists for the people who work hard in this community day in and day out to make it the great social fabric that it is. So again, a lot of the, the police department, a lot of the community, the city council for taking such a step. And I'm grateful to see that we're shifting toward considering this issue in an era of compassion. But the long-term repercussions, I think I also wanna be coming in and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Anyone else wants to speak on this? Seeing other comments, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the desk. Mr. Rossi.
I'm gonna ask Sergeant Alvarado to come up to talk about the operational things that I won't be able to answer the questions that were asked, but while he's coming up as it relates to the municipal code, we will be bringing back the details for that. We know that those were identified as areas that do need to be improved. We don't have many specifics at this moment. That's why we're not asking for you to consider them tonight, but they will have to come back for a public hearing for, as we would adopt any changes to ordinance. So, so we will be bringing those back with specifics in the future. So with that, Jay, if you could come up and answer those other operational questions?
Sorry, missed the last part of that. I think the question, one was about relocation. How will we, how do we facilitate the movement into a home or into a facility? So in my experience, the way we handle things, it's, it's literally case-by-case. So we can't say there's just one end-all, be-all way that we're gonna be assisting people and getting them to these resources. In some instances, we are able to transport them out of these vehicles. In some situations, the housing or entity or stakeholder who's assisting with this can help with the relocation. It, it all depends. You know, we've seen reunifications from other cities where funding has been allotted for them to go out of state, back to their, wherever state they're, they live in. And there might be a law enforcement officer that, that accompanies them to the, to the airport to assure that they're safely on the plane. There are, I know we're recently in the process of signing a contract with the COG. I know they do allow for transporting. I know Tri-City, as wonderful as they are, they don't do transporting. But the new COG, in which we'll be talking about it later day, they will, they do new transport system. So we have, we have some stuff in place that's definitely something moving forward. We need to continue. And again, this is an evolution. We need to continue to look at ways to accommodate the needs and it's definitely what we'll continue to address.
I think that the question too was, I think the belongings that you have at Conex now, that's where the biohazard cleanup comes, I'm sure. But if they do have belongings and there's a situation where you're able to remove them and get them into some kind of situation, that we would store their, their belongings, whether it be a cart or whatever they have, and store them in a, in a Conex, correct?
Yes.
And until the time they would get out and they could come back and get their items.
Absolutely. So I mean, we like to call it as a reunification of their belongings. Oftentimes it's their whole home, everything they have are maybe in a shopping cart. And we're not as insensitive to say, we're gonna strip your cart from you and, and, you know, you're never gonna see it again. No, it's as important to them as what's important to us. So with this process, that will allow us the opportunity to, to have some temporary storage for them. And they could be assured that it's safe and there'll be a process in place where, you know, there's timelines and timeframes where we, that are reasonable. But again, this is all situational based. So that's the plan with Conex.
And then I think it was tightening up with the curfew, which makes sense earlier.
Yeah. So when we look at the curfew, we try to stay consistent with some of what the other cities were, were using. The way ours read was 10:30 PM till daylight. We wanted to take away the ambiguity and make it clear that it's 10 to 7. In addition, we did add a different location where we've seen influx of homeless sleeping overnight. Again, this is just another tool that's offered for us. It's not to say we're gonna go, you know, do a part 29 and clear them out. But if we do have a call for service or we do perhaps a situation where we need to enforce it, this gives us a, a different opportunity to do that.
And I think also the basically person obstructing public way is just basically to remove safely that individual that's having an issue, whether it be shouting, whether it be obstructing public entrances to our buildings, which we've all had and it's very, very uncomfortable. But you guys have done a very good job with that.
Yes. Our, our approach is, we don't go there with the intent to just strip property. We're gonna try to be reasonable and working with a solution that meets both of our needs. And it's- Um, and it's more or less the part of sakers, you know? And again, if, uh, we don't have compliance through, uh, alternative means with, you know, simply just moving your belongings, there might be some mental health crisis. You know, we don't know until we experience that situation. But, um, this is just another tool, uh, that we have to promote guidance for the, of the public life.
And I must say though, that the most important thing, if you see something, call the police department, please call in. Because that next effect may be that individual being hurt or hurting someone else. And that's what we don't want in our community. And there's been instances where they do hurt themselves. And then it's a hospital, we gotta transport them, and it's just an ugly situation. So if you see an encampment, if you see an individual that's, I do it all the time, sorry, I do it all the time. If I see someone in a situation or encampments, can't have that, you know? So we need to get these people some services and help, so. Do we have any questions for Sergeant Alvarado?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say thank you to you and to Chief Flores and, um, all of you for what you're doing. And, you know, I talked to you, Chief, you know, back before, um, years ago, about things that you're trying to enact to make sure that this is a safe community for all of us. And, you know, Jay, I'm really glad that Mr. Bowen shared the story that he did because I think it speaks to what you're doing, that it is an individual case-by-case basis, because there but for the grace of God go I, right? Um, and I really appreciate the compassion with which you're dealing with this, um, and hoping, you know, to make this a better community for all of us. And I really want to see what else you're going to come up with in terms of, you know, this is three years to Ms. Bochamp's point. This is ARPA money that is a one-time deal. So we really need to figure out what is the long-term solution? And how can we invest in making this, uh, a, a safe place and a good place for everybody? Because again, you know, some of these people, we don't know what happened to them. We don't know what the stories are. So, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to what, um, you will come up with, um, in partnership with, um, you know, Tri-City and all these other groups. So thank you for the work that you've done. I think it's amazing. I think, um, it's something that the city should be proud of, um, that you all are doing. It's not every city's on top of it. So appreciate that.
I appreciate that. We're fortunate, we, we definitely have a team that's, uh, they're very proud of what they do in this job. Uh, so, uh, you'll see a lot of empathy and trying to work through issues. So I'm proud to be sergeant with the team. A really good, good group of, uh, men and women and a great support from our chief and staff.
And you're doing a great job on the mic, buddy. Nice job. Nice job. Chief, nice job. You trained them well. Captain, nice job. Uh, I just want to say too, that without our partnership with Tri-City, this wouldn't happen. We have a very good relationship with them. I think it's very important. We have a few members of the Tri-City that are all in our crowd here tonight. And, uh, without them, it's been many years that we've had them in service to assist us to make this a, uh, a good outcome for these situations that occur, so. Counsel, comments or concerns?
A question on where the grounds of city hall, does that include our public library as well? I know in other cities I've seen in the past that, um, that has been a place where contention about our public libraries and public lands.
I believe the library to this county property is not, uh, an area that we, yes, okay, no.
A suggestion that we put that down, part of our, our areas, uh, our, uh, that's for lawyers and not being, uh, putting encampments on as well. Cause I, I see that in other, other places too, if it's allowable, if it's not our land. I, uh, uh, like the specifics on, on the different places because then we can really point out of, of our land and where that's at. This ARPA funds, um, those funds have not been accounted for anything else already for this. And they have, we have enough for the three-year commitment.
That is correct.
And, uh, that is a very good use of our ARPA fund. But again, one-time money should not be put on, um, ongoing costs and make it this more permanent. And looking forward to future, um, allocations of trying to find money for, for, for future. Our host team, I've heard nothing but great things. I, I sit on the Foothill Transit, uh, governing board. And, uh, they talk about our host team working on the Foothill buses. And appreciative of especially Laverne Police and Tri-City's working with them, um, helping with the homeless on the bus system. And so, uh, that has come over and over again in, in our meetings. And so I want to make sure and bring that to you as well, that, um, over the last, um, two years since I've been on there, that has been a discussion of what Laverne Police have done. And so appreciate the work and the compassion that you do, um, with, with anybody that's in need. Um, this is, it's, it's not illegal to be homeless, but there, there's acts that, that go against our ordinances. And we, we need to find help and be compassionate with that too. And, uh, appreciate what our, our police have done. Um, I, I am full force to make this, move, moving to make this permanent as well. Um, our one-time money should be used on one-time costs, but this can get our initial, um, foot on the ground and moving forward with that. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Crosby. Councilor Cash.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm all for this, uh, I'm all for this, I'm all for protecting our community. I strive for that, and I hope you guys continue to do that too. Cause I don't want one incident where some family member is being assaulted by someone who's homeless. And I get that, all right? I understand that, I'm passionate, but I worry about our citizens' lives. I worry about that lady that walked down the street. I worry about our family members going to the store and being approached aggressively. I'd like to know how many times are we going to have a contact with somebody to, to some sort of enforcement action? How much is it? I don't know what the right answer is. But as you progress through this, hopefully we can find a way instead of the way, right? So, uh, I fully understand it. And I look forward to the future, see how we can be able to continue have that. Because I don't want officers who are the three officers and the sergeants that are on patrol every day go from one hundred and thirty calls to four hundred calls. Now we have multiple incidents involving the whole city are tied down by one homeless or two. That's important to me. Important to me when people go work and home, they're safe. And then, and these homeless encampments, they are everywhere in Laverne. I see them all the way north of Laverne, in between, and then there's Brons up in the hills beside there. I see them hiking up there and camping out. That's a problem for me. It's going to be an incident there. I don't know if it's a fire, there goes all those homes. What about those people? What about their lives? I know their lives matter to me. So please continue enforcement, continue to do good, and just let, you know, how we can get better. Thanks, Sergeant.
Thank you, Councilor Cash. Councilor Johnson.
I really appreciate what the police department is doing. I think this is the best way forward. Um, obviously it's not a fix for the homeless issue. Um, but at least it's a good start in Laverne to treat people compassionately. Um, I think being able to store their belongings, if they can figure out how to retrieve them, it is going to be a great thing. And my concerns would be the drug use, um, the needles that are spent, the, all of that stuff gets picked up, um, in a safe manner. But I do appreciate everything that you've done so far and that you're doing and, and support this.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Brown.
Now if that's it, I'm, I think we're ready for a motion.
Uh, let me, I just need a minute. Uh, concur with everyone's statements. I think that we're in the right direction. Uh, as Ms. Bochamp said, this is, this is a, and, and also, uh, Councilor Crosby, this is a, uh, temporary, uh, monies. But, um, I think with moving on the goal line within about three years, with developers' fees and all the other issues that we're looking at, I think that's where we're going to capture these monies in order to build our force. We already know we need more police, we already know we need more fire, there's no question about it. Uh, I think this is the path forward. Yes, it's wanting to bring homeless, but hopefully, I, I'm very positive that our governor, hopefully, if he does one thing that's good, is a CARES Act, which means that we'll have more of a method to take care of the mentally ill and the drug abuse situation and present in some type of sustainable situation that protects them and protects us. So that's something that we really need to, uh, push on a local level and our, uh, higher elected officials because it's very important to protect our residents and to protect our citizens. But also protect our employees because it's not pretty out there sometimes. Uh, I do appreciate this also. I think it's a great, it's a great move forward. I like the cleanup of the, uh, ordinances. It's nice to see that we will start enforcing those ordinances and have some teeth in it so that our officers have, uh, an avenue and our fire department and all of the, basically our, all of our departments to have an avenue to protect themselves, but also protect the residents, so. With that, thank you, uh, Sergeant Alvarado. Nice job. When are you on your next speaking tour? Thank you very much. And I do appreciate, uh, Chief Flores and, uh, all the staff. With that, I think we need a motion.
Can I be approved?
Second. Vote please. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Well, there we are. We now move to council assignments. Uh, Mr. Rossi.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will take this item. Um, as is customary, when we have a change of council, we also revisit the council assignments. Um, I have previously provided a list of the current assignments as well as vacancies to council. You provided me some feedback. And what is remaining is what you see in the staff report before you. There were basically five committees, six assignments, because one of them requires two individuals to be assigned to it. That needs going. Actually, there's an optional one they didn't call out here, which is senior advisory. That was when council chose to add an individual to last time. It is not required, but if you so choose to identify somebody for that, that would be fine as well. Um, and then there's also the alternate, alternate assignments, which are optional. So I'll just kind of walk through the list. And then what I'm basically looking for is individuals that would like to step into one of these vacant assignments. So we have the Fourth of July Committee, Active Transportation, Cultural Awareness and Social Inclusion, also known as CASI. The Public Finance Authority that encompasses the EIFD, um, which, um, is a separate entity, but there is appointed or appointed from the council. And then the Christmas Morning. So with that, I will open it up to council with pleasure, as far as how you would like to assign, volunteer, whatever it is you would like to do.
Uh, I am happy to volunteer as tribute to Active Transportation and the Christmas Morning Committee to add to my list, unless somebody has a, you know, wants to arm wrestle or act.
I don't see any fights here. Everybody good with that?
I am very good because they actually put my name down on there and I'm like, I didn't.
Okay, so which one is that? Councilor Brown.
Uh, Active Transportation and Christmas Morning. So I do need a friend on the Christmas Morning Committee.
And if nobody stepping up for the Christmas morning, I'd be happy to be out there and running on that for down the last three years.
Kids in schools still want to go there. Okay, I'm not going to, you're going to fill these out?
I'm Rossi. I'm Johnny.
I'm not, you can try.
Public Finance Authority, are we still looking for? Or should we, Public Finance Authority, are we looking for an additional person there or is that an issue? We are, but I think you might run into several conflicts because of where your properties are. Okay, vote on those, I'll, so, yeah.
And I'm willing to do the EIFD if, if no one else wants to.
And that's the goal line we found that. There was another one with the lead not completely.
Those have all been filled based on?
We're good.
Yeah, so it's just, we have Fourth of July and CASI are the two that are remaining at this point. And, um, for the Fairplex Liaison, um, there are a couple of, um, community members in there. Have they been contacted to, you know? Um, they're expected to retain their spot. Nobody has, there's not a term on those particular ones at this point, so. Sorry. There's no terms than those particular assignments because it's based on where they live. So, um, where if we did have a vacancy, we'd come back. This is just for the council assignments on these committees.
Okay. The CASI group is an evening meeting at six o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it seems like jumping, I think probably I will go and take the. Anybody want to do the Fourth of July?
I'll do Fourth of July.
There you go.
Lowrider's coming up next, is it? Come on, Bowler, you're old man.
Okay. That is all the ones that weren't necessary to fill that haven't already been assigned. Um, the only other one again, if you wish to proceed your advisory, but not regarding. We're good on Saturday.
Anybody want to do senior advisory? When is that one?
Not a necessary assignment, just so you know, I'm not trying to add to your workload.
Plus, we can always fill that out.
If, if there is a need, otherwise if you bring something back to the council.
Okay. So I think it's important, we need that connection, but I think we could rotate too, couldn't we?
Yeah.
Let's do a rotation. So the next meeting, one of us just called, who wants to go, is that cool?
I'll go next, Chief.
Okay. I can, I can do the one after that, and then that way we have a connection.
Absolutely.
There you go. With your lowrider?
Oh, yeah. We'll all have fun.
Okay.
So if I can just have, uh.
Do we need, we have a motion on this?
I move to accept the committee assignments as discussed during the meeting.
Right, if you want me to go through them, we'll listen. Fourth of July is CAS, uh, Active Transportation is LAU, uh, Cultural Awareness is HEFA. Um, EFA is, um, sorry, but Johnson, but it's Crosby. Um, and Christmas Morning is LAU and Crosby.
Second.
Vote please. We now have public comment. Uh, we have, um, Charles E. Hill. Again, I remind you, if you could just be closer to the mic, just don't hit, please. It's, uh, very sensitive, I guess. And we'd like to, we've tried to keep to a three-minute max if we could, please.
Uh, good evening, council. I just had some comments. Uh, I saw you publish the letter, I sent to the city council, as far as the, tonight's meeting. And I just wanted to make a couple more points to that letter. Uh, I checked on the L.A. County Public Health website, uh, this afternoon, and they tracked, uh, the number of deaths from the COVID. And I wanted to know what the various cities were. And they had it up to date, uh, as of midnight of last, of yesterday. The city of Claremont had eighty-nine deaths of COVID. The city of San Dimas had a hundred and twenty-nine. The city of Pomona had five-hundred-and-ninety-six deaths. City of Glendora had two-hundred-and-fifty. City of Laverne had eighty-four. Uh, the total of these five cities is one thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-eight deaths. Uh, I asked in my letter that, how the city could look into becoming more involved in finding the origins of the coronavirus. I asked for the fire department to start an investigation. And I asked for a proclamation where we adopt the idea that's been proposed by the WHO, the World Health Organization, to have the G seven nations start an independent investigation into the origin of this disease. And I think when you add up all the brain power in the five cities that we have, enough intelligence among us, we could do better. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Nicholas, front.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And back again to talk about the need for a comprehensive security review. Uh, in my mind, it's not a small item, it's a big item. And I've learned over fifty years to determine the most important thing and do it first. And I want to keep calling attention to this comprehensive security review. Now, since the last time I was here, I learned, uh, from, uh, councilman, I catch it, get the. Now, since the last time I was here, I learned from councilman, I catch it, get the, that the military does that frequently. They call it a composite risk management, and they do it to get ahead of the problems and to prepare to defend against them. When Kirk Lotepo, Kirk Lotepo was here to talk about the standards of cover for the fire department, he mentioned the need for a community risk reduction plan. I don't think we have one of those. And it's something that should be developed by the leadership, but also the community. And I think we're going to need a lot of people, a lot of citizens, to be involved to really understand the kind of risks we have in a city. I emailed each of the council members and also the clerk, my proposal from last time. I listed twenty-one different potential areas. I won't go through them again. I have hard copy, if you prefer to have a printed copy. So why is this important? Because we want to get ahead of the potential risks that we have. In the medical world, aren't you glad if someone does a brain scan, a body scan, and they determine that you have a risk for cancer, or a risk for high blood pressure, or a risk for another disease? And then you're able to take steps to head that off. I think this is important because maybe, we know, we know some of the risks. We know the risks of crime, we know some of the risks about fire, but I think there are risks we don't know yet. And if we had a good team working on that, we'd find out what some of these risks are. You know, we have a biomedical business that operates. I don't know if there are any risks related to that, but if there are, I'd like to know. An entire cities, some in our state and other parts of the world, have burned to the ground because it was a risk of the natural gas system that leaked and blew it up and started fire and burned the city to ground. I don't think we have that risk. Other places have water contamination risk. So I just want to keep the process moving. And in my proposal, here's the steps that I propose that we take.
You can finish your thoughts, Mr. Nicholas.
Okay. And I'll, anybody that wants a copy, I'll give you a copy. There are ten steps. What it starts with, developing a team of people, some kind of a commission, whatever, maybe informal, that would be tasked with looking into all of these and then bringing them back for our action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Anyone else for us to speak on public comment? You? You? None of you?
How've you been? Pretty good.
Good. You're looking good.
Human basketball, good.
Okay. There you go.
Thanks to police department, I had a problem with a car with glass high parked up on their front door.
Whoa. Don't ask me what I just did. I'm like, yeah. Sorry, guys. Don't touch your phone.
Here, this car parked up on my porch, and I thought somebody visiting across the street. But when I got up in the morning, car's still there, guy's sleeping inside. Called the police, they're within five minutes, took care of the deal, everybody left. So thank the police department. You got pictures up there?
I have it here.
There's a few little ones. Okay, I know this is a county problem, this is also a Laverne problem. That worst comes from our park, went to the worst belongs to the county. That stagnant water in there, mosquitoes are terrible in there. Absolutely terrible. It's easy to get to, the phone just tore down half a fence, so they go back in there asleep, then you have to keep a little stuff on the walls, which I never had in school there. So what can be done about the mosquitoes? Nothing. And the next problem is, it's not a problem, it's something for the future. The parade was really nice. When the parade turns on F Street, F and Fifth Street, there's some wires that go across the street. Phone wires, there's wires. And two, three of those bolts have their American flag up, which is good, caught those wires. So we might want to put a limit on how high you can go. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. We'll take a look at this.
And where exactly is the location of that here? I don't know that, the wash.
It's on the two-ten freeway, footbridge on Chelsea, on the left-hand side. There's part of the fence missing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you come up? You just state your name and your address, please.
Sure. Mark Peterson.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. And my address is sixty-seven forty Sherwood Drive, here in Laverne. And I just had a question, I'm not sure if it could be brought up now, but three years ago, actually almost three years ago now, the Sierra Laverne Golf Course slows down. And I appreciate the effort that you have had as far as we've been. That's been done every year, just like it's supposed to happen. In January, we had a historic windstorm that took place, and I'm impressed with how the city handled the parks and all the other areas where there's downed trees. We had a really dry winter, obviously, and these, these trees are just completely dead. And I know I've heard some exchanges that these trees have to be two-hundred feet away from the residents in order to have to have them removed. And on Golden Hills, for sure, those, those trees are less than two-hundred feet, but I don't think if there's a fire, embers are going to pay attention to that two-hundred feet rule. So I like the fact that you guys enforce rules, and this is one I, I'd really like to have enforced as well. Not just for everybody that lives in Laverne, but also for the fire department that has to handle this if it does go up. So there's an opportunity to get this corrected and have those trees removed to make it safe for everybody, but it should be done soon. I was really worried, actually. Fourth of July, I was watching fireworks, and I know sometimes kids do things that they shouldn't do or other folks, but fortunately, there wasn't a fire that night. But every day, this is getting dryer and dryer up there. So I'm not sure who to talk to. I understand there's some sort of a L.A. County ordinance that if there's a downed and dead tree, that it has to be removed. If the owners who are, I know you're a businessman, they're not doing a good business up there. They're running it poorly, but they still have responsibility, in my opinion, to take care of what their expenses are. I know it's a big expense, but it needs to be done, and I think it's going to cause problems if we don't get it taken care of. So I'm not sure who to talk to, but I'd love some direction or some insight as to the proper authority to get that taken care of, because I can't do it.
We'll comment when we're done with this, but there is a path. Anyone else for public comment? Ms. Bocham. She's not leaving. She's not leaving, is she? Sorry, I didn't do that.
As one of the moderators on the Laverne Coalition of Concerned Citizens Facebook page, there was a post several months ago, and I want to apologize to the people who made the post, because I said I would bring it up at a meeting and it completely fell through the cracks, as people like to say. They posted this back in April, so my apologies to these people. I'm asking that the city put some signage at the parks, especially Los Flores. Many people are walking their dogs off-leash, and it's intimidating others who are walking their dogs on leash, and they have these dogs approaching them and their other dogs and having incidents. And so, and then also maybe facilitate some kind of a container for the poop bags because people are not picking up after their dogs. I mean, this is an ongoing problem throughout the city, not just at the parks, but even residential areas, my house included, where you have to constantly pick up after people, and it's disappointing. We're all adults. We should be responsible dog owners, but I'm more concerned about people who are walking their dogs off-leash, because that could definitely be a liability, especially if it takes place on a city park. So some kind of signage or notification to the people who live closest to this park or other parks, so that they're more responsible and it'll be a safer situation. There was even one mother here who said that she would not allow her daughter to play at the playground because there's dogs roaming around off-leash, so that takes away from the child's fun time, so it's not fair to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Anyone else have a comment? Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
I see those are you. That is a good statement. Terry Curtis, five ninety-sixth Street. Mr. Rossi, I read about your pending retirement, and I just wanted to thank you for your years of outstanding service to the city, your commitment to stewardship, good planning, and hiring key people, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment?
We're going to close public comment, bring it up.
Mr. Rossi, you want to answer a few of those?
Yeah, there are two that I think I can answer rather quickly. Over to the Sierra Laverne. Actually, the, there are three major parcels that are on there that have some downed trees. Two of them fall within the county and the ag commission and as far as working through them. The, and we just updated our website on the Sierra Laverne to, today regarding that activity. The property owner was noticed by the county. They did not take care of the downed trees that are within the two-hundred feet of residences as they were supposed to, so the county will be taking on the work and then adding it to their property tax bill, as we had discussed in our previous meeting, that that is available to them. So that is going to be taken care of. They don't have a timeframe on when it will be, but just know that that work will be done. As it relates to the last parcel, that is followed under the city's purview, so we will be working through our fire marshal to see about a similar approach. We have been in contact with our city prosecutor, who's also been in contact with the property owner, to see if they will address it on their own, or what steps we have to take to go in and do it. So there are a couple of things that are being done for those trees. Now, I will be the first to say that if it's outside two-hundred feet, it really, as it is listed in the state code, as well as within our own ordinance, they are not deemed as being a fire hazard, and as such, they cannot be removed. We, we just have that standard that we apply. So there will be some trees that, outside of that, that will stay fallen within the property itself, but inside of two-hundred feet, they should be removed. As it relates to the question regarding, or the comment regarding dogs in parks, it should be noted that there are only certain parks that dogs are even permitted in Laverne, and those parks already have the receptacles and the bags. I don't think Los Flores is one of them. I think we took an action council years ago, that any park that has a sports field was not a park that should, that was deemed to be having dogs. Technically, it's a violation of the code if there is even a dog on a leash in those parks, and I think those parks are signed that way, and if they're not, I will make sure that those get corrected.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Councilwoman. Councilmember Laau.
I wanted to share something that was, that I, was shared to me via CASI, but it's really through the police department. And I don't know how many people are aware of it, or how many people know that this service is available, but our police department does do a special needs registry. So this is basically a tool that helps LVPD when they're contacting members of the community with people that may have disabilities that, like autism, schizophrenia, dementia, any mental or developmental disabilities. And it's intended for residents who may find their communication abilities challenged or ineffective. So there is an annual registration, there's a form you can fill out, but this is just really helpful so that if anything, you know, should happen and someone is encountered by the police, the police have this information so that they can interact with that person in a correct way. And so, you know, I'm sure all of you know somebody maybe who has autism or who maybe is experiencing something that, you know, to make the interaction with our police escape as possible, this is something that is available on the Laverne PD website, and I think is pretty amazing, again, that our, our police officers do so. Please feel free to spread the word and use it if you'd like, but really impressive. To learn more about the police, you can go to the National Night Out tomorrow from four-thirty to seven-thirty, there was my segue, at Los Flores Park. But I, I think it, you know, it's, it's important to note that we do have a really, a lot of really amazing things that do happen in the city, and a lot of good services that our personnel provide, and so this is an opportunity to get to know them and to meet, you know, or hire our police, and to see what they do on a regular basis, and to get to know them as people. So definitely, if you have the time, come stop by. I went to the Tri-City Mental Health Meeting a couple of weeks ago, and again, there were some comments made about our services in our city and how great they've been partnering with them, so I wanted to bring that up and say thank you, because I think that partnership is invaluable, so I appreciate the work that you all do. And then for those, I know this is not technically in the city of Laverne, but we are so close, and if you live in my district, you're really close, but Pomona, the Fairplex is having a specific plan open house, and this is basically an opportunity for folks to get to know what's happening with the specific plan, what are they doing on their campus, and what are they planning for that area. And so because it is in our backyard, and a portion of it does touch Laverne, for any of you that are interested in, hey, what is the Fairplex planning to do with their giant campus? The event is on August thirty-first from six to eight p.m. in the Pomona Unified School District Auditorium, which is on eight-hundred South Gary in Pomona. And then the other thing I just wanted to plug to is that the University of Laverne holds an annual scholarship golf tournament, and the proceeds go to students in need of scholarships. And so it is at Red Hill. There are a lot of sponsorship opportunities. If you're someone who likes to golf, you know, please feel free to come out, maybe get your companies or your organizations to consider or force them, but real fun time, it's a really great event for good cause, tax deduction, all that kind of stuff. So as always, have a great week, be kind to one another, and see you next time.
Thank you, Councilmember Laau. Councilwoman Crosby.
Thank you so much. Short and sweet congratulations to girls softball, making it to the championships. Also, our senior boys from L.A. League, they made it all the way to the semifinal game, so they did a great job, too. Thank you to our Laverne Grand Prix coming August fourteenth. Our, the majestic always helps out with our Youth and Family Action Committee and bicycles to our police to hang out around Christmas, so really appreciate all the fundraising and things that they do, and bringing people to our downtown area as well during the Grand Prix. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crosby. Councilmember Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. When I first came out and got here on city council, I just wanted to make sure I get out there and, and see as many people as I can. There's not enough hours in the day for me to get out there, but however, I've been having a really great opportunity to talk to the people in, in our district throughout Laverne. One day I had a great opportunity of going seeing our firefighters over at Station Three. They're in training, which reminded me when I was a lot younger, not that I was ever a firefighter, you know, I remember that basic training, remember that academy-style training, so it's good to see them. And I just made a comment, they're crawling on the ground, and I was like, hey, you guys count the ants or? No, it was just funny. I'm all on the force officers, so that was a little rivalry. Should have been fine, I'm sorry. All right, it's a great opportunity there. I had a great, great time to go out to concerts at the park. I wanted to thank those from the State Fair, they gave me a few thousand tickets. I've been able to pass out to the, the Unified School District to pass out to the kids. I have went to Dingian, I went to Holy Name of Mary, I went to Cal Baptist, and I went to Lutheran, so far the schools here, and so that they can give out the tickets to the kids and to the families. I want to thank those at the State Fair. That's here in San Anita. I'll be going, I'll be there tomorrow, looking forward to being National Night Out, and hopefully get the chance to see you all there. I've also had the opportunity to talk to several families in unincorporated areas of Laverne, and hoping to start that conversation again, looking forward to previous conversations back in 2012, how we can bring you into Laverne. It's a great city. I understand the part of the county, but let's just have that conversation. There's nothing wrong with having a conversation, right? Step by step, see what we can do, how we can move collectively better. So you guys all set? You know, we look girls softball, how awesome. Look forward to, God willing, I won't jinx something, but I look forward to the parade right here in our great city. Why not us? Right? Why not us? It's a really great opportunity, so thank you so much. I appreciate you guys coming out here tonight, appreciate you voicing your concerns, and how we can move forward better in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cash. Councilwoman Ray Johnson.
Oh, just appreciate being here, listening to all the good, the good things that are happening in Laverne. The police department, again, hats off for the homeless issue and taking that head on. I appreciate that. Bob, I know you've been looking into the vote for mayor and some other, I'm not sure if you. if you have an update before us, anything on that? I don't know if there's anything on the legal part you can report at this point?
We're, we're working through the issue. It is complicated. You've asked for a roadmap, one, what it would take to accomplish that. And we expect to have it to you soon. Let's just say there's some potholes on the road. And we've already, I think.
Okay.
Because we're looking for a day, hearing those results sooner than later. And separate from that, we're looking into options for what type of survey or question or however we're going to communicate, mailer or multiple fronts. But we're talking to the Rose Institute as well as True North and others that have that type of statistical capability to do.
Well, I think it's been said. Good job, girls. Thank the police department, we're on the right path. And I think we're on the right way to protect our community, but we, it's, it's, it's morphing, it's organic, it's gonna change constantly, so. But thank you all for being here. It's a nice house tonight, it's nice to see more people here. And we only have a few staff this time, not all staff, and we have actually residents here tonight. So I really appreciate it, but thank you all. Remember, shoppe, pray, Laverne, that's where we keep our money here. It keeps the services that we offer to our community, it's very important. And we look forward to National Night Out tomorrow night, it's gonna be fun. And if we can donate to our girls' little league softball, very important to get them to Greenville, North Carolina, or wherever else we can help them, and supporting our youth in this community as we all do. Thank you, and we have a closed session tonight, Mr. Russi, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
So we will be recessing in the closed session.
Closed session.
Our next scheduled meeting is August fifteenth, 2022. And we are recessing in the closed session at eight thirty, eight twenty-five.
Under government code section five-four-nine-five-seven dot six.
Thank you.
I like it.
I love that government code section. Thank you all.